Call to order. Prayer, Vice President Reeves, followed by the allegiance.
Dear Lord, please guide this council in their decisions for the betterment of the borough. Pray for our sick and elderly and protect and keep our children, servicemen, police and firefighters, arms free. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
St. St. America. St. St. America. For Christ's sake, for my nation, for God, and for the people of this world.
Tim Rokol.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Junior member Gross.
Oh.
Donahue.
Here.
Vice President Reeves.
Here.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here. Very quick announcement, there was an executive session held this evening at 6:00 to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Presentations for this evening, I would not be able to pronounce your last name on the best day, but I think if I did pronounce your last name, probably most people in Delaware County would not recognize it. We asked this evening Stevie G, who is our IT person, to come and give us a quick briefing on where we stand with our IT technology here in the borough.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Steve J. Christopher, better known as Steve G. I've been doing the IT work for the police department for the past two years. What I'm proposing is to change some things, the way the borough computer system operates. Right now, you're operating on a domain server, which has been there for quite some time. And a domain server, you're actually getting your mail from the domain server and a few other things. What I was suggesting was to change that system to a workgroup type server, which means we replace the domain server with a workgroup server, which is going to make it much more easier to share files, much more easier for people to interact. Right now, the domain server is very cumbersome, and because everything writes back to the domain server, if you lose that server for any reason, not only is that machine down, but the rest of the machines are down also. I've been doing IT work for probably the best part of 20 years. I handle many, many police departments in Delaware County and the burrows, and the first thing I do when I go in is I take a look at the systems they have. Many of the older systems were domain servers, which I've replaced the workgroups, and they work fine. I've given you a proposal here tonight, which you can review. Basically, how it works is the borough already has an account with a hardware vendor, Tiger Direct. The borough would pay for, would order the equipment and pay for the equipment directly to them, and my only fee would only be the labor to install and configure it and get it up and running. Again, I'm very familiar with these types of situations. I do Parkside, Upland, Brookhaven, Chester Township, Glen Alden, can't think of them all. Prospect Park, Norwood, Tidicum, of course, because I'm from there, Sharon Hill, and Glen Alden. And the majority of them, I do the burrows tip. So I'm looking to streamline things for you, make things more modern, easy to use, easy to manage, most of which I do, I could do remotely, once I get things set up. And I take things slow and easy. I don't make very dramatic changes in the beginning. How it would work is, once, if you decided to do this, the server would come in, I'd begin the setup process, would take about two, three weeks to get everything loaded and ready to go, and then I'd come in one day and switch all the workstations over from the old server to the new server. So that's my field. Yes?
Is there any downtime associated with?
No. The only downtime would be that day when I'm here, to switch over from the old to the new, it would be no more than two, three hours. I do police departments all the time, and going from a domain server to a workgroup server on a police, because police use a records management package called Visual Alert, I usually have them down for no more than one hour. For a borough, what you have here, it'll probably be an hour to an hour and a half downtime during the day. And also, if you want to talk about the email systems.
Sure.
The email systems right now are coming from the domain server. It's very cumbersome. You're also paying for a postini spam removal process. I highly recommend that you go to a web-based product, which would allow you to access your email from anywhere. The one that I use the most is from a company called Hover.com. They allow you to use it on your smartphone, your Android, your Apple device, and also webmail. And it uses shared calendars, and it uses shared contacts, and all kinds of different things. What I've done is I printed up everything for you, some handouts on how to set things up, if you decided that's what you wanted to do. Okay?
All right.
Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions for Stevie G?
Okay.
Can you give me a quick ballpark on pricing? And I, you know, just to?
I priced everything out, what I was proposing for the server, for the server, a new UPS unit, which is the Unirruptible Power Source unit, and a spare hard drive for a hot swap. A hot swap drive is a, you're going to run it on a RAID 3 configuration, RAID 5 configuration, which is three hard drives that run simultaneously. I'd like to put a fourth hard drive in there, that any event one of the drives fails, it automatically reverts to the hot swap drive, which keeps you up and running. And then also, an external hard drive device, which would be for your onsite backups. It's a little over $2,000 for the hardware. And the price for installation is $950. And that takes me two weeks, or two months, or two years. I'm not going to take that one, obviously, but what I usually do on a job like this, I don't charge by the hour, I don't charge by the minute, I don't charge it for phone calls. I give you one price, and I stick by that price, no matter how long it takes.
How about the software systems that we're currently operating on? You know, one of the things that, you know, I would like to personally see is a refresh of, like, our television station. We've got a rolling PowerPoint presentation right now, a little dated.
It's a little dated, yeah.
I guess is a polite way of putting it.
Basically, Office, if you go up with the Office 2007, you'll basically have all of the latest upgrades. I know there's an Office 10 and an Office 365, but you don't really need all that for what you need here. Basically, you need to make the upgrade from Office 03 to Office 07, which gives you all the latest, you can open up all the new Office-type files, and, you know, it's not that expensive. I have enterprise licenses for the server software and all that stuff, so it's not going to be that expensive at all. And I would do that while I'm doing the job.
And from a user's standpoint, I know Tina's very accustomed to, you know, programs that she's using now.
Tina basically uses all of the Office stuff.
So it would have a similar look?
Yes, very similar.
Nothing that we'd have to go get additional training, if she knows how to use Microsoft Word now?
If she wants to stay, right, if she wants to stay on Outlook, if she's using Outlook for mail, she'll stay on Outlook. Basically, it won't be any big changes in the programs.
I have a question. I think last year, I don't, I don't know if it was just a proposal, or whether it was approved, but there was some expenditure for some sort of software program that had to do with the borough records. Do you know what that was?
Could have been Carbonite Backup? You have a?
No, I think it was?
We do have Carbonite Backup, though.
Yes.
No, I know, which was referred to. It was a thing.
Yeah, Digital Scanning, yeah.
I want to say it was called DocStar.
Yeah, something like that.
And all that was, was a proposal to come in and basically scan all of the old archived documents and put it into electronic format. It never really took off, until you just brought it up. Personally, I forgot about it.
Yeah.
I think it was something that you had brought forward, isn't it?
No.
DocStar's brought it forward.
DocStar is very expensive. You can?
It was like six or $7,000.
Yeah. What they do is they come in and put a machine in for you, and then they take all your big prints, and all your big documents, and scan everything in for you. You take your small stuff and scan them in, and then it makes a searchable database that you can go in and search for things. There's a couple of them out there. I know that Norwood, Tidicum uses DocStar, Norwood did use DocStar, and not using it anymore. There's also another one called Laserfish, which is much, much better, in my opinion. Radnor uses Laserfish. It's a little bit more expensive, but it does a lot more. You could scan giant plans in and things like that, if you have a large scanner, or you could have them do it. So there's two basic players out there, DocStar and Laserfish, if you're looking to go that direction.
And that is just to archive your old stuff, correct?
That's archive your old stuff, it makes things searchable. It actually OCRs, it reads everything that you scan in, and then it makes a database. So if you're looking for something pertaining to a certain word, it'll find every document that has that word in. But then, like I say, to scan all your stuff in is pretty expensive.
So what you're talking about is upgrading the hardware? Are you going to upgrade the workstations or the PCs as well?
The workstations seem to be okay right now. They just need some cleaning up. You know, it all depends on, you know, what the council wants. But like I say, my main goal right now is to get the server up and running, and to get the system off the domain server, get it on a workgroup. Once we do that, and then everything calms down, then we'll look at upgrading the hardware. But from what I see right now, what you have is adequate on the hardware.
So this is going to be the hardware that's right here in the borough building?
File server, yes.
And you're going to set up that network, and then you're going to use Carbonite, which is a thing where you back up the data?
Offsite.
It's offsite on the internet?
You're already paying for that, yes.
Okay. And then the borough email addresses will be a separate thing?
Borough email addresses are separate. Right now, you have edystoneborough.com. I found that edystoneborough.org is available, and the domain is available, and the web, the email addresses are available. So if you want to go that route, you can switch to that, and use edystoneborough.org instead of .com.
Something that I want to initiate very quickly is to be able to have some email access, so that the residents would be able to email members of Borough Council. The system that you're describing and the discussions that I've had with Acting Chief McChesky, is this essentially what you have set up downstairs?
Yes.
In the police department? So basically, we're going to mirror what's downstairs at the police department with what's upstairs with the admin?
When I first came to Eddie Stone at the request of Ed, he had gotten a letter from the prior guy, like, two weeks, that he was going to no longer do it. And Eddie Stone was using a domain server back then for the police department. And we got our hands on a server pretty quickly, got it up and running, got you off the domain, got it on the workgroup, and I very rarely hear from him. And Ed, as opposed to what you're doing, what you're basically using a server for is just to store files. Ed uses his for Visual Alert, which is a SQL-driven database program, which requires constant connections. Like, he's got four or five workstations downstairs, plus his upstairs, constantly connected to that. So the server has to be really set up in a robust way to be able to handle all that traffic. And we very rarely have ever had a problem. We haven't had a problem with the server yet, and it's been running two years around the clock, so. And that's 24/7 now.
Instead of .com, .org, what about .gov?
.gov is very tough to get, and it's very expensive to get. It costs you, it costs you $500, $600 to get that domain, and you have to file what kind of paperwork and all. Most of the municipalities favor .org, .org, because it sort of gives you a flair of an organizational-type thing, as opposed to a .com, which anybody can get. So most of the ones I deal with have, like, radnor.org, okay, that's what they use. It gives just a little more authoritative feel to the domain, to the web address, to the, I'm sorry, to the email address. And edystoneborough.org is available.
It is available.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, any other questions?
Steve, just to give you a timeline of, you know, how we're going to move forward. You've got packages, I believe, for everybody here this evening?
I have four different handouts. One of them is the email setup for webmail, one of the, all the information on the server, and that installation. The third one is the webmail, and the fourth one is the iPhone and Android.
Have you taken the liberty to set up emails already?
I did.
Terrific.
Because I have, I have the, I have an open account for them.
Okay.
Where I can set them up, it doesn't cost, cost anything, so.
Are we looking at B. Donahue at edystoneborough?
First initial, last name at edystoneborough.org.
So if I was to make that announcement this evening, if anybody wanted to?
They are set up and ready to go.
Send a council member an email? It would be first initial?
First initial, last name.
Last name?
At edystoneboro.org.
.org, okay.
And how do you retrieve your emails? Right there, in the package.
Okay.
And then you could disseminate the default password that I gave you, you could disseminate that too. And then the first time you go on, it'll give you the default password, and then you can go on and set your password to whatever you want.
What we'll do is we'll spend the next month taking a look at the proposal. It'll definitely be an item at the March workshop, and we should be able to give you approval on the 10th of March to move forward with the purchase. Lead time-wise, is this something we do move forward, we have it by the end of March?
You should have it by the end of March, yes.
Terrific.
Yes. If there aren't any difficulties, we have it by the end of March. Okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
I'll hang around for a little bit, in case anyone has any questions, or I'll leave these with you, okay? You can disseminate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum, Mr. Wilson?
And you know our procedures these days.
Yes.
We'll just ask you to step to the podium, which intimidates you, and state your name and your address, and a brief explanation of what your concern or issue is.
Okay, I am Glenn Wilson. I'm at 1251 East 11th Street in Eddie Stone. And I didn't notice whether it's on the agenda or not, but I just wanted to briefly say that we went to the information session about the study for access to Route 291 that is being conducted by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And I was glad to see a good turnout. You know, I was there, my wife Claire Wilson was there, Bill Stewart was there, Dave Patterson was there, Ed McChesky was there, and Alan Reed, our new mayor, was there. So it was nice to see us represented, because I think in the past, maybe we haven't been that much present at some of these things, although I don't know that much about that. I would say that it was, this is something that I did videotape, and it's going to be on the Civic Association website. If you're able to find the videos of the Borough Council meetings, you'll be able to find the video of that presentation, if anyone wants to see it. And just as a brief explanation for anybody who does watch it, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission is not a government organization per se, but if you look at all the people that are on the board and everything, they're mostly people that are people who work in government, or were appointed by the governor, or things like this. They are talking about possibly beautifying the road, maybe putting a median down the road, which, you know, wouldn't hurt. They're talking about trucks being able to turn on and off of the highway, what the clearances are when you go under the railroad tracks, things like that. They are not a, they are not a group that has, has a lot of money. They're not, they're not funding a project, so they're not going to, you're not going to go to them and say, "I'd like you to build us a new underpass someplace," or "give us a left-hand turn lane," or something like this. But in talking to some of the people that were there, you know, we found out that very often in the future, when some project does come up, and the funding does suddenly appear from someplace, a lot of times, it refers back to these studies. So it was good that we had people that were there to give them some input. They also said that they would be very happy to have someone from their group come in here and meet with people from the town, or the Borough Council, at just about any time, so we could give them further input. The kind of things I was thinking of was, for example, when you're coming north on 291 into Eddie Stone, and you get to Seville, you can turn right into the village, you can't turn left into the town. Now, that's the kind of thing where you might want to give some input, because you might want to decide, well, do we want a left-hand turn there? Do we want people cutting through the town to get to Route 13? You could see that as a bad thing. You might see it as something to bring people into some of the businesses in the town, so it might be a good thing. But that's, that's the kind of thing where, if you have opinions on something like that, it's good that our town has an opportunity to, you know, express those opinions. The other thing that, about this meeting that was very good was, I know, I got to meet a number of people. The, oh, the mayor of Chester was there, and there was a guy from the, from Caesar's Casino, and Mr. Gallway from the Eddie Stone Railway Company was there. And they were environmentalists, they were people from Trainer who were convinced that this study was going to ruin their town forever, even though it's already a four-lane highway, and it's not going to increase the traffic at all. I'll probably get in trouble for saying that. But there were a number of people there that you could kind of network with a little bit, and it was, it was good that we had people there. The other thing that's coming up that's good, and maybe, maybe Bill can tell you the details on this, I understand that with the Eddie Stone Railway coming in, and bringing these tanker cars of crude oil into the town, there are some questions about rail safety, what the risks are of having the trains come in with this, what type of crude oil it is. It is different than your standard crude oil, because it's, it's basically crude oil that comes from fracking. And there's some evidence that it's more flammable than standard crude oil. Now, I don't think that this is something that we need to, personally, I'm not frightened by this, but I think we need to make sure everybody involved, the railway company, and the environmental protection people, know that we're aware that there are some risks involved in this, and that we want them to stay on top of what's going on over there. And so, since there was, I guess Representative Hackett was talking about having a meeting, I think the council offered to host it here. And is that still, like, March 5th, or?
Yes. And I actually got it as part of the upcoming public meetings at the end, and I'll kind of expound upon a little bit about what the purpose of the hearing would be, so thank you for bringing that up.
So it's, it's good, it's good that we're getting involved in some of these regional things, because that's not just an Eddie Stone thing, there are other towns that are involved in that, other people in the region. So I think that as we become more involved in some of these regional things, we can take advantage of some of the things that these commissions and so forth have to offer. And one of the things that we talked about one time was the fact that the county drug, what do we call that? The?
I believe it's called the Heroin Task Force.
The Heroin Task Force. There are, the county has, has a group that deals with keeping an eye on the drug situation. And by, you know, being involved with them, and being able to, you know, willing to participate with them, you know, we'll be able to have them perhaps be more involved down here, too. But I just, I think it's good that, that we're kind of reaching out to some of these groups, and I think that's a good thing, a good sign. So thank you.
Thank you, yes. Vice President Reeves?
Just so you know, Glenn, last Wednesday, there was a heroin awareness forum at the Ridley High School. Bill Stewart, Dave Patterson, myself, along with some residents, and went and were said, we were told that by Jack Wellen, of course, by the DA, that Eddie Stone was very well represented.
Good.
There's also another drug awareness on, at Ridley Middle School, on the 27th of February, at 6:15, and that's our local PD with Ridley and Ridley Park, correct, Ed?
Our PD, Ridley Township, Ridley Park, and Jack Wellen, so. And at the end of the meeting, we'll make yourselves available for any resident with any questions concerned with information and devices.
Great.
I don't want that, it was a real eye-opener.
Yeah. There's been a lot, there's been a lot of news about that, so.
Glenn, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Just to assure that we've captured anybody that would like to address council, this will be the last call for anybody for public forum. Regular business items, Tim, if you could read the treasurer's report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, the balance of the general fund, beginning January 1, 2014, was $169,925. The borough had an excess of revenue over expenditures in the amount of $139,889. We had payroll expenses, $88,726. The balance of the general fund, effective January 31, 2014, is $221,088.
Counsel, you've heard the treasurer's report for month ending 31, January 2014. What's your pleasure?
Make the motion, we accept the treasurer's report as read, make it part of the permanent minutes. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cash, receipts, and dispersments journal.
Make the motion that all bills are paid, once approved by committee chairs, and all money is deposited. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Counsel, I trust that you've had the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from the regular meeting that was held 13 January 2014, as well as the workshop meeting held the 4th of February 2014. Undertain a motion to approve those minutes?
What's the typo? Can we fix that before we approve the minutes?
Typo is?
Under Communications, motion was myself, second was Dave Patterson, to approve a donation in the amount of $100 to the Boy Scout troop.
Should have been for 400, correct?
Correct.
Let me find my spot. Tim, you'll make that correction?
Yes.
And noting that correction, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for our regular council meeting, as well as for the workshop?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting for 113, 14, once the correction's made, and for the workshop on 2, 4, 14.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Tim, can you give us a briefing on the Exelon offer to repaint the lines and replace the stop sign and burned-out signal lamps at the Pico Jug Handle?
Yes, Mr. President, members of Exelon Generation Safety Coordination Group, come to the borough, and we had a meeting here. They had some concerns about what's known as the Pico Jug Handle on 291. The traffic, the double-yellow lines, the white border lines, as well as the stop sign lines are extremely worn. So they brought some photographs to the site, and I think anybody that's familiar and drives that way, like I do, it needs repainting. But they are, of the mind that they would undertake and pay for the repainting of those worn street lines. They would also replace the stop sign that was on the jug handle, but was hit by a tractor trailer, the mayor told us. And additionally, there's a number of streetlights along 291 that bulbs are burned out, and they'll either undertake to replace the bulbs themselves, or pay, Eddie Stone, we use a private contractor, so if it turns out that the private contractor would do it, Exelon Generation will pay for that. So with council's approval, I'd like to contact them and say, yes, you know, please make the repairs and replacements. And will cost the borough nothing.
Acting Chief McChesky, do you have an opportunity to review the proposal that?
Yeah, Tim and I discussed it the other day, I worked with the new office.
See any issues or concerns?
No issues. I don't know why the stop sign wasn't replaced sooner, but I have no idea, it was one day in the past.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to give our borough manager the authority to move forward with getting Exelon to move forward with the proposed improvements at the jug handle?
I make a motion to have our borough manager authorize what Exelon's offering as far as repainting and repair.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Presente, can you give us an update on the clean energy proposal to operate a natural gas facility behind the Walmart property?
Do you want to skip Mr. McNeil's offer?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you give me an update on Joe McNeil's offer to deed property on Concord Avenue to the borough?
The McNields were longtime residents of the village. They moved out some time ago. When they moved, they sold their family home, but they also owned an adjacent parcel on Concord Avenue. It's a? It's a 19-by-60-foot parcel, and the mayor told me tonight it actually is adjacent to the park. That Joe McNeil has offered to deed this property to the borough of Eddie Stone for $0. So, if council's so inclined, I could accept Mr. McNeil's offer and we could ask Sandy to re-deed it.
Mayor Reeves, you're familiar with the, with the location of the property, correct? And you had mentioned earlier it was adjacent to...
They have the fence and there's a little, little lot next to the fence and there's a driveway. And there's another parcel next to the park.
So, it is adjacent to the park?
I believe that's what you're talking about, yes.
Sure you sent him a thank you card, Tim?
Tim, will we need a motion to accept something that's free to the borough?
Should they make a motion?
Why don't you do that?
Council, I entertain a motion to accept the offer of Joe McNeil to deed the family plot or property at Concord Avenue to the borough at zero cost.
I make a motion to have our borough manager reach out to Joe McNeil, accept the offer. And like Karen said, send him a thank you card.
Follow-up with a thank you letter.
I have a motion, a second motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Catania, that might be something we can keep in mind for public use.
C D B direct.
And now I'm back to where I had skipped over originally with the compressed natural gas facility.
Thank you, Mr. President. Clean Energy is North America's leader in clean transportation. They came to the borough in advance of a press release they intend to make. They've purchased the existing Pico station, which houses compressed natural gas, what they call C N G. This is a fuel that's being used in more and more vehicles. What they're going to do is upgrade the site, this is one of Pico's, the Pico property, 1510 Chester Pike. They have all their equipment behind the Walmart. Clean Energy's going to come in, upgrade the site, upgrade the facilities, and then they're going to start doing business with compressed natural gas vehicles, fleet vehicles. I know the county Adalbert has a couple of them now, I'm not sure where they get their fuel. The man was also saying that Honda, and I think Chevrolet, are going to start rolling out consumer models of these vehicles. So, at some point in the future, it might be a, like, filling station for it. But in the meantime, what it means for the borough is that that site that's not being used will be a center of employment and it will be a situation where we're going to have, where they'll have to apply for certain permits. They've engaged Penoni Associates, who we're familiar with in the borough, for their engineer. So, we expect them to come in and file for permits for the upgrades they make to the site. And then, once they're functional, there should be some employment opportunities. Didn't get so far into them about that. I think they're planning to make a press release sometime this month or March.
Okay. Do they have a timeline of when construction is anticipated to start?
I, I'm thinking late spring, summer. They, they seem like they were moving quickly. And the gas is at the site already. Pico will continue to be the supplier.
So, it's already a compressed natural gas site? They're just going to update and...
Yeah. Glenn, the technology has improved. I don't want to act like I know what it is, but this man from Clean Energy did know and he was kind of going over some of it. But it starts with basic things like their point-of-sale system, which is their ability to receive money. I get, you know, that gets upgraded. But then the platforms, tanks, they're going to do some significant work there. But they've engaged an engineering firm, which will obviously have to be working with Mr. Catania's firm, the borough engineer, as the, the site is approved. It just seems like there's some good business coming into the borough, which is good.
Tim, would it be premature to invite these folks to possibly give a presentation at our March workshop?
He's definitely willing and open to it. So, if you say so, I'll be late to call.
If we could, if we could see if they could come to the March, March 3rd workshop? And if that is a little premature or the date's not available, then see if they would be available for April the 7th.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that'll fit with the timeline for when they plan on coming in to do their upgrades. Mr. Catania, are you familiar with the proposal that they're moving forward or...
Yes.
Okay. Next business item is the approval of the tax anticipation note in the amount of $250,000 at a fixed rate of 2.5 percent. Tim, just to confirm, we're going to be reaching out to Sharon Bank for that short-term loan, which will have a maturity date or a term date of June 30th, 2014, correct?
Yeah, in fact, if council approves the issuance of the tan or tax anticipation note, it's already been approved by the bank.
So, it's already been approved by the bank. We just got to take action.
If you accept it, yeah.
Accept.
It'll be funded this year.
Council, I entertain a motion for the approval of the tax anticipation note in the amount of $250,000 with Sharon Bank.
I make a motion to approve the tax anticipation note for $250,000 at a fixed rate of 2.5 percent for the duration of June 30th, 2014.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tim, if you could read the code enforcement report, please.
Mr. President, 23 inspections were performed in January, 18 work stop order devises and or citations were issued, 18 new work permits were issued, 48 licenses were issued. The codes department received fees in the amount of $17,104.42 in January 2014.
Council, you've heard the code enforcement report for January 31st, 2014. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the code enforcement report as read and make part of a permanent minute.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Presente, the police report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. There were 408 calls for service in January, 110 citations issued, nine accidents, 23 deaths. There were 59 parking citations issued and the police department made 21 criminal arrests.
Council, you've heard the police report for January 2014. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the police report as read and make part of a permanent minute.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Presente, the fire report, please.
Mr. President, fire company responded to 19 alarms, eight-day alarms, 11-night alarms. 261 members of the fire department responded. That's an average of 13.74 percent for a alarm.
Council, you've heard the fire report for the month of January 2014. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the fire report as read and make it part of the permanent minutes. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Council, in the package is a professional services agreement for the maintenance of our fleet vehicles. Would be an agreement between the Borough of Eddie Stone and Taylor and Signor Auto Repair. Essentially, what it does is it outlines the costs and pricing for the maintenance and repairs to our borough-owned vehicles. I trust everybody's had an opportunity since I've circulated around for the last couple of weeks. All of the comments from our legal counsel have been incorporated. And we would be in a position to execute the professional services agreement for fleet maintenance. Can I have a motion to execute the professional services agreement, please?
I make a motion to execute the professional services agreement to Taylor and Signor for fleet maintenance.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, please.
Counselperson Thompson?
No.
Patterson?
Yes.
Grove?
Yes.
Dunuhu?
Yes.
Vice President Reeves?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
The Y's have it five to one.
The motion will carry. One new business item that is not in the package, it's in regards to the litigation between Mary Frances Howlett and the Borough of Eddie Stone. Through our respective legal councils, we've received a release and settlement agreement as it pertains to her separation of employment with the Borough of Eddie Stone. While the specific terms of the settlement are confidential, on behalf of the Borough of Eddie Stone, I'd like to thank Francie for her number of years of dedicated service to our citizens and to wish her well in her retirement. Council, we've had an opportunity to review the release and settlement agreement in executive session. May I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the agreement with Mrs. Howlett.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. As we go into the roundtable discussion, I kind of wanted to do a quick introduction. We do have the council committee assignments for 2014. Wanted to do an introduction to, you know, the chairs on each committee. Also, to challenge each committee to be very active. We've actually set a schedule for when the committees will be meeting. Tim, has that been published in the Daily Times, the schedule for the committee meetings yet?
I'm almost certain, but not 100 percent. I think, yeah, I think, I think the answer's yes.
The answer's yes.
Is that in the packet?
It was in the packet for the workshop. And what I can do is I can give you a copy. I don't think you were at last workshop. So, I can give you a copy of this if Glenn, you're so inclined to put it on the website. But not only are the committees going to meet, but in order to have some accountability of the committees, we've all discussed and come to agreement on some goals that we're looking to accomplish in 2014. So, for, you know, the admin and policy committee, Despo Tadashore is the chair. That committee is going to meet biannually. It'll be on the last Tuesday in May and November at 6 o'clock here at the Borough Hall. Some of the goals that Despo is looking to lead her committee to accomplish would be to establish email addresses for all of the council members. We are looking to do an update or a refresh to our website. And we're also going to take a look at updating the employee handbook. Finance and audit, Karen Reeves will be the chair. That is going to meet biannually as well. It'll be the last Tuesday in May and November at 7 o'clock. So, the admin's going to meet at 6, the finance will meet at 7 here at Borough Hall. Karen, you want to kind of go through some of the goals that you're looking to accomplish?
Yes, I'd like to review all of the insurance policies that we have. We actually have an issue that arose with the new farmhouse, which is, I believe, we're underinsured. We need to look into that. But I want to review all of the insurance policies, not just, you know, we're going to do it, do it for all of them. I'd also like to see us sell some of the surplus that we're not using. There's, I believe there's a dump truck. I believe there's police cars that are no longer worth repairing or seeing if we could get rid of some of the surplus. And I'd also like to see our part-timers get a raise. It's been several years since our part-timers in the borough received a raise. And I think that our EMS drivers and EMTs should be compensated just slightly more than even the hourly employees because of training. That's one of my goals, and I'd like to get done before the end of the quarter. That's all my goals.
For police and emergency management, I've got the pleasure of chairing that committee. One of the initiatives is to make sure that our fleet vehicles, police cars are in tip-top shape. And that was accomplished this evening through the passing of the professional services agreement for fleet maintenance. Another issue is to, to deal with some of the drug issues here in town. The drug prevention and awareness is, you know, one of the ways that we can curb the activities that we see here in town. And so, we're looking at doing some police department-sponsored drug awareness classes. And the first of those is actually scheduled 27th?
Yes, February 27th.
Of February. It's a joint meeting with Ridley Township, Ridley Park, Eddie Stone at the Ridley Middle School.
Yes.
And then the last goal that I was looking at was to look at possibly installing some type of a emergency notification system here in the borough. There's a lot of different vendors that are out there. One of the ones that seems to be most utilized in our surrounding communities is a system called Code RED. We've actually signed up for a free demonstration this coming Thursday, correct? And sent out the invitation. We've engaged not only the police and emergency management committee, but also have invited the folks from the fire and fire marshal. We're involving the police department. We're involving the fire department. Andrew Walsh is on the list of those who are going to give input about this. And I also had the opportunity to meet with Bob Gleam on Friday. And Bob is very interested in learning more about this system. So, stay tuned for additional information as we start gathering the facts on, on how to implement this type of system in the borough. You know, not only could it be used, you know, in the event that you've got a hurricane and we have to open up one of our evacuation centers, but just this week, we were in a situation where we had to abbreviate the trash pickup and recycling pickup because we were battling snowstorms. So, there was a lot of questions, phone calls, emails, social media was ablaze asking why my trash wasn't picked up or why my recycling is still on the curb. You know, a lot of that is, you know, just the fact that you've got a weather event that, you know, we're going to have to suspend temporarily those services while we keep the roads clean. So, they're, they're the goals that, you know, we've got set forth for the police and emergency management. Mr. Patterson, zoning and code enforcement?
Yes. Zoning, one of the things I was worried about was the abandoned buildings in town that didn't have, you know, cats are going in and out, you know, squirrels, things like that. We had a company called ADU that I got to speak with them. And they will come in and board up the houses and things like that. Moving forward, we already have an agreement with that, but moving forward, I'd like, I would like to make it to where when we have a fire, they're automatically called. So, that way they can board up the property right there. Also, I'd like to turn around and see if it's capable. I know other municipalities have where a house, if it's, if a house is on fire, the insurance company will pay the borough 30 percent of that as an escrow account in case someone walks away and we're stuck with the property. So, that's another thing I'm looking into. Our ordinance, there's, there's a lot of them that are outdated and there's some that aren't even there. So, I'd like to update new ones and get rid of the old ones. Another thing I'd like to do is streamline it, make it a little faster. You know, it's taken like seven days for folks to get their notices back on what the violations are to their property or contractors, to the job they're doing and things like that. property or contractors, to the job they're doing, and things like that. So what I'd like to try and do is have it to where they are given the violations right there, carved out. So these are things I'll be working on in the coming year. And that's everything. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Buildings and beautification, Karen Reeves is the chair of that committee. Karen, your goals?
My first goal is to develop a rental policy for the Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, which I'm, we're currently in the process of doing. We think we have it, we think we have it pretty much there. Some things that we need to tweak and talk to the actual person that we would like managing it. I'd also like to identify repairs, the repairs need to be done down at Lighthouse Hall, which is getting into horrible array of repairs. And I'd like to also begin the planning for the new highway yard, which was part of the phase of the firehouse in the initial drawings were developed. I'd like to move forward with that, with some idea so that our guys can have running water and don't have to use an outhouse. And that's my goals for the year.
Karen?
Yes?
Are there plans for this building, for the space that used to be the fire department?
Eventually, there's a lot of repair that needs to be done in that old, where the old engine room and all is. There was a mold issue, the roof was leaking. Some of those repairs have Band-Aids on them now. And moving forward, I don't know if it'll be, like, I'm trying to get mine done within the first six months, so maybe on this end of the second six months, see what I can accomplish the first six months.
When you say the highway, I mean, is that what's back behind the sewage place? You know, the pump there? It's behind the new firehouse?
That little shack.
Where the police cars are parked and things like that?
That little shack back there is the highway garage.
I was just curious. The only other thing was, there's a, there's a building, if you go back behind Lighthouse Hall, you have the first field with the baseball diamond. And there's a second baseball diamond behind that near the railroad tracks. And there's a building right by that diamond. Is that a borough building?
Yes, that's one of our garages.
Okay.
That we actually store a lot of decorations, recreation things, you know, falls, you know, baseballs, sports equipment. Well, yes, that is, that is our.
Okay.
Glenn, with the highway yard, just to kind of give you a little bit more of a detailed explanation is that, you know, right now, we've got a modular office building that, you know, the highway crew gathers in the morning for their morning huddle and before they go out to pick up the garbage or recycling or, you know, go to cut grass. It's, you know, just kind of the gathering place. There are some animals that have nested in the roof, the leaks, and it's probably one good snow load away from being a collapsed building. So we really want to, you know, get those guys in a safer, more weather tight location. Also, where we store our salt, it's a converted cart port. It's got the poly tarping with some galvanized posts. It's starting to rot out. You know, so with the cost of the commodity of having to buy salt, you want to keep that as protected as possible. So we're looking for somewhere for them to put their salt. We've got a series of garages, the one that you had mentioned by the ball fields. There's also two garages behind the sewage pump station. Those, when you're trying to store your equipment, it's difficult because you're strung out all over town with, you know, where'd I park the lawnmower? And then the last thing is, is that there's a tractor trailer that sits there, which Gina uses for storage. It's not the most aesthetically pleasing scenario for those folks that live on A Street. We've gotten some complaints, concerns. Councilman Patterson actually took the initiative to extend the white vinyl fencing to provide the visual screen. But, you know, just to kind of get that area a little bit more organized, cleaned up, and a safer location. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking to do. You know, the long-term plan, like Karen had mentioned, it'd be nice to, you know, have that phase two of the firehouse underway. But, you know, it's going to take some funding, so we'll just do small steps.
That modular building that's there now, does it presently have plumbing?
No.
Or not? So it has electricity, but?
Electricity, no running water.
Okay.
It's a port of pot.
Okay.
Under the highway and sanitation, I've got the pleasure of chairing that committee. Certainly, you know, now that we've rolled out the recycling, that makes us eligible to pursue grant opportunities. During the course of the year, we're going to look at replacing the garbage cans that are throughout the borough with a combo, garbage recycling. This way here, we're capturing, you know, the debris or litter that is, you know, being disposed of from your walk home from the store, walk home from school. And then lastly, and this was actually mentioned earlier, and, you know, when Glenn was speaking in front of council, is to begin the replacement of the faded street signs. We've got a lot of signs that are supposed to say, no parking here at a corner, but don't say that no more because it's just a white sign with, you know, what used to be a red, but it's now a pink border. So that kind of outlines the things that I'm working on with the highway and sanitation. With fire and fire marshal, Beth Gross has chaired that committee. And Beth?
Okay, I think the number one thing is to develop emergency plan with the Eddystone Real Company. That'll be one of the first things we're looking at to do. Also, partners with the recreation for planning committee for the parades, to make sure everything's okay with that. And develop fire safety plans for the residents, encompassing everything, every kind of disaster you could possibly imagine, that we all have a wherewithal of what's going to happen next. Okay? And again, if you have any questions, concerns, or ideas, don't hesitate to email me or whatever. Thank you.
Which will soon be B Gross at Eddystone Borough, B O R O dot org.
You have to check a little bit.
And Danielle, I want to give you a compliment. Last year's parade was probably the best parade in decades with the expanded route. You know, but also the Eddystone Fire Department with their initiative of calling their surrounding companies and making sure that we had a lot of apparatuses show up. So, you know, if we can start getting a lot of that cross dialogue between, say, the recreation and the fire, you know, the sooner you know the date of the parade, the more pressure that you can put on the fire department to say, hey, can you start making some phone calls? Who have we gotten commitments from to bring out their pieces and have, you know, their opportunity to show off the fire equipment that they have in their town?
It was definitely the loudest parade I've ever been to.
Dave, Parks and Recreation?
Yes. What I'd like to do is update the bylaws for the recreation board. Danielle has been kind enough to look into all that for me and help me with that. I'd also like to have more functions there for the children in the town of all ages. I think we're done. I'd also like to see if there's more programs that we could offer the seniors to get them out of the house, especially during the winter months. Because, again, get out and communicate with their neighbors and things because it's too cold outside. I'd rather like to have some more things done in the winter than in the summer, what we can, and to be able to get out and speak with their neighbors and things like that anyway during the summer. So those are a few of those goals.
And Danielle, you've chaired the decor for us.
Yes, this is a new committee for me, so I'm in the learning process. And I appreciate your help with getting the goal situated. But I will be working with Dave Patterson and Bob Donahue, as they're also chair people, or I'm sorry, committee people on this. My goal is to implement usage-based sewer fees, mapping condition inspection of mains, and future CDVG funding for sewer rehab. That's it.
Any questions? And it was available at the workshop meeting, the list of all of the committees with all of the members, a schedule of all the meetings for 2014, as well as the goals. So, you know, we'll make sure that we get that posted up on the website. Please, I encourage you to attend a meeting that doesn't necessarily occur on the first or second Monday of the month. Let's get involved with making sure that we've got accountability in our council committees.
Was there a workshop meeting this month?
Yeah, we canceled on Monday due to the inclement weather. We rescheduled for the Tuesday, the following day.
How do you go about notifying people of that?
Code Red.
So that had to be posted. But in fact, I emailed you, Glenn. I was surprised you didn't get back. Because usually, you post on your website too, but you didn't get back?
No, I didn't, I didn't get anything on that. I, you know.
Yeah, we posted the door because the weather did it to us. It was emergent. But I, in fact, I was surprised you didn't email me. Actually, maybe I typed in your, no, actually no, because you're saved on my computer. So I just put, Glenn, please put this on your website, whatever. Yeah.
Okay, because when those things get, you know, that's another thing that would be really great to get the borough website up and running.
That's where it went. It went to G Wilson at Eddystone Borough dot org.
That's not me.
I haven't paid any attention to you. Now I'm trying to pay attention to you.
Glenn, due to the weather, due to the weather, we had to cancel just because it was an unsafe condition for folks that were traveling from downtown.
Yeah, I know.
And once we do that, what we'll do is post the note on the door.
Okay, I would just like to be able to, I know, I know, I'd just like to make it available for people to see. So it would be good if.
You did a nice job, Boris, Glenn.
Well, you know, I just.
I'll also issue a challenge for those folks that would like to volunteer their time and talent and skill to get involved in some of the various citizens committees that we have. We've got a lot of vacancies that were available. The list was circulated at the workshop meeting. We do have one vacancy that needs to be filled in the civil service commission. So I'd like to call for a nomination to fill the vacancy of the civil service commission, please.
I'd like to make a motion to have Tom Riley on the civil service committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for Tom Riley to serve on the civil service commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves, if you could administer the oath of office for Tom Reeves, or Tom Riley?
Tom Riley.
Too many Reeves in the room.
Just as many Grosse's.
I have a little summary of what is called the MS4 metering, which is a function of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Resources. It has to do with the discharge of stormwater to our stormwater basins and creek streams and what have you. In order to satisfy the requirements, the borough had to get a permit. And some five years ago, we got a permit from DEP to be able to conduct this particular study and make an annual report, which has been done over the last five years. In order to satisfy the requirements for public involvement, participation, the borough needs to provide an annual report and invite public comment. To date, over the past five years, the borough has completed the following: distributed stormwater materials to residents for educational purposes throughout the borough, through the borough website. The engineer's office has inspected 25% of the sewer outfalls in the borough as part of the required screening practices. Inspectors have monitored any and all discharge points to see that they are in compliance with the state laws. The borough Public Works Department is trained to ensure that all work performed is in accordance with the conscience of the environment. In other words, everything has to be done in accordance with the environmental goals. Future opportunities for public involvement, there are two seminars I'd like to mention. The first one is being held on February 23 at 2:00 PM at Penn State Brandywine. And that is one on protecting our water resources and environment. And the second one is to be held on February 26 at 9:00 AM at the Garrett Williamson Foundation. That has to do with controlling invasive vegetation in aquatic and terrestrial environments. At the end of the, at the year, somewhere around September, October, we will have to prepare an annual report, itemizing the input from the public, and also what the borough council and the borough committees have done to address the MS4 permits. You'll be hearing a lot about this probably on, maybe even a monthly basis, from the DEP requesting information that would refer to your quote-unquote MS4 permit. But we've been, we've been gone for five years, and we've on time, annually submitted a report as necessary. So we're right up to date, and we'd like to just take off from here and continue with more public involvement. It seems that's the tone of the times, more public involvement for everything. So this is just another thing that we need the involvement on. I'll turn this over to you now.
Thank you very much. Quick recycling update. According to our highway superintendent, Gene Scott, we've got over 100 homes that are now participating in the recycling program. Recycling is picked up curbside on Tuesday morning. So if Monday night or before you leave for work Tuesday morning, put your recycling where you would normally put your trash. And we are in the process of picking up the recycling. With over 100 homes and 850 households, we're looking at 11.8% participation. So we're halfway. Our goal was 20% participation rate. And we're getting closer. We did have our first delivery beginning of this week to the MURR facility up in Philadelphia. And we had delivered approximately five tons of recycling for the month of January. In order to get that 20% reduction of all household waste, you know, on average per month, we should be around 15 tons a month. But considering that, you know, number one, January's a light month when it comes to garbage. Also, we've been hampered and hindered by the weather. And it is the first month, the first rollout of it. So, you know, we see participation growing on a weekly basis. And, you know, hopefully those numbers will be rising higher and higher come spring and summer. The recycling stickers have arrived. So there's plenty of recycling stickers. If you do not have a sticker for your can, just come up to Borough Hall and Tina can provide you a free sticker. And I've been trying to give a tip every meeting about recycling. And the tip tonight would be to keep it all loose. We don't want it in plastic bags. In fact, the MURR facility will disallow it if it comes in plastic bags. So very much avoid the Walmart and ShopRite and Kmart bags. But basically, the way But basically, the way that I have my desk, my blotter up here this evening, I can take everything that's on this blotter, with the exception of the iPad and the iPhone, and put it right into the recycling bin, and that's the way they want to see it coming to the facility. So newspapers, junk mail, the flyer from the Acme and ShopRite and Pathmark that you didn't get to go to last week, that all is recyclable, and would go right into the Open forum, I'm going to start at my right. Danielle?
At the caucus meeting, I did say that we sent out a mailing to the businesses in Eddystone to ask for donations on behalf of Recreation. I just wanted to acknowledge some of the businesses that did donate money to us. Sugar &amp; Sons donated $250, Discount Oil $250, Spade &amp; Bar $100, Radio Communications $500, and Liberty Electric $300. Also, Recreation hosted their tournaments, their annual tournaments this past weekend from Thursday until Sunday. We did very well, and Alan Reeves Jr. was one of our refs there, and he did donate back his ref fees to RIC, so I want to thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Junior Grose.
No, Ned.
Vice President Reeves.
Well, we have a couple things, Bill. First, one of the things that was brought up were borough cell phones. I know that our former chief of police and our former mayor, and I believe Janer has a borough cellphone.
Correct.
And rather than replace these cell phones, I mean, I think that everybody should be given an allowance instead of everyone having their own phone that the borough pays for. Any thoughts? In other words, you're just giving like a $50 a month allowance. I believe that's what the federal amount is.
I wouldn't mind entertaining a policy. You know, I'll certainly speak to Janer to see if he's got a personal cellphone account. I know that the last couple places that I was employed by had a, what they call bring your own device, where you brought your cell and you were paid a stipend by the employer for exclusive or for use of the phone, so I wouldn't mind entertaining a policy in the next month or two.
I agree. Okay.
I agree, if it's business, we pay for it. If it's personal, they pay for it.
So if you wanted to.
If you're going to agree on allowance, so much per month, everybody's given so much per month for use of the phone.
Yeah, yeah, if they're, if they're working for the borough, they pay for it. If they're on personal, they pay their own personal time.
Okay.
If you wanted to bring a motion to the table one month to come, we'd certainly take a look at it.
Okay. Also, is there any way we can get rid of some of these Facebook pages? Is that, I mean, I know Despo's admin, and I believe that she's looking into that, but I mean, I'm getting complaints from residents that are trying to go on, for example, they have the Recreation Facebook, and they can't get on.
That's an open site.
Open site.
If anybody can join.
I've had people saying that they can't get in.
It's been open.
Was it closed?
Yeah, it was, was privatized at one point.
The borough?
Yeah.
Website was. I think, I just think we should get rid of all the Facebook, re-address them, the Facebook pages. What's your thought?
I agree, that's fine. I just, we just heard from the gentleman tonight about the computers and things, so I don't see why we can't have it.
We have him.
All on one system.
Have him on one system, yeah.
That way, you only have to go to one spot, you hit Recreation, and Recreation opens up and everything's there. You hit Fire, you can open it up and everything's there. There's enforcement, so on, so on, so on.
You just, you need to distinguish between what's, what's an official borough site and what is a personal site, because anyone can have their own personal site if they want to, but they can't represent it as being a borough site unless it's something that's been approved by the borough.
Right.
You know, the confusion happens when, well, we know that the, the basic borough website is dysfunctional. It's never updated. If there was a meeting, you'd never know from the website. If there was a tournament, that wasn't on the website. You know, it may have been on the, I know the Recreation has a website and a Facebook page.
They do have a website. It's not going to update it.
Okay. Yeah. But clearly, you know, there, there should be, if there's a separate site for the Recreation Board, at least for the teams and standings and things like that, there should be a link right on the front page of the borough website so that people can find it and know that that's an authorized, something that's being done by somebody with the authority to, you know, to maintain that information.
I'm sure there's a way.
I know, I have hope to look into, I don't see all the posts. I get notifications that there's posts, but I don't see them all.
Yeah, she said that. I don't know why that happens, Kelly. I have no idea.
And I know, there's a couple other people too that.
Yeah, you weren't the only one that said something. There was, hopefully they'll be addressed, installed.
My, my comments are, you know, number one, the most important thing, I think, that we as a borough council need to do is to make sure that we're getting the information out to the public. You know, so without having any other way of getting it out to the public other than social media right now, you know, you continue status quo until we're able to do something with refresh and update of the borough website. And once we get the borough website updated, refreshed, then we can start getting some continuity. I'd love to see a borough website where it's actually tied into the police department website. I'd like to see a borough website where it's tied into the fire department website. I'd love to see a website where it's tied into recreational activities. However, it's our responsibility as borough council folks to make sure that that information is getting upgraded, updated, and that it's real time. You know, it doesn't, doesn't do anybody that wanted to go out and see a basketball game any good this weekend to know that the tournament was last weekend. You know, so it's definitely wanting to get the information out to the public, I think we need to work as a council body.
Absolutely.
Over the next couple months, and making sure that, you know, we really start pushing the, the information out and getting it out to the folks who'd be interested.
Absolutely.
I, I would think that you need to make a distinction between having a website and having a Facebook page, because I think they're two different things altogether, and some...
With the Facebook page, you have kids too that can access that, so it's a good tool for kids, but everyone has to be able to view the information. That's the problem.
There's more administrators.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about any particular Facebook page. I'm just, for myself, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty up to date on computers and stuff like that, and heck, I even got a tablet for my birthday this year. But, you know, as, as an official place of record, I, I think a website is different than a Facebook page with all kinds of comments on it and things like that.
Right.
I mean, whenever you have a page that's open to comments, it's open to all kinds of comments, you know, and whether, whether it's open to some people or open to everybody or only open to people who have a Facebook account, which not everybody does have, I just think that so, social media is like Twitter and Facebook. A website is a website. It's an official, it's an actual place on the web that's always there, doesn't change, just gets updated, but it's, it's something that has permanence and has an official stature.
Vice President Reeves, anything else?
Oh, yeah, just one other thing. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Francie Allen for all her years of service. Francie was an employee here for 18 years, and I wish her the best of luck. That's all I have.
Councilman Patterson?
Mr. President, I have nothing this evening.
I just want to reiterate about Francie. Wonderful person, still is, and wish her everything.
Councilman Dale. Mayor Reeves?
Yes, I have several things. Tomorrow night, February 11th, at 7:30, there's a, a presentation given by John Halligan at the Ridley Middle School on bullying, cyberbullying, and youth depression. Supposedly very interesting. Everybody, all adults are welcome to be there. Mr. Halligan started this back in 2003 when his son was bed suicide from being bullied on, or on the cyberbullying and bullying in school and stuff like that. He's from Vermont.
Can you tell us the time again?
7:00 PM to 8:30 tomorrow night.
Where at?
Ridley Middle School.
What's that, in the auditorium?
At the auditorium, yes. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, I guess I address this to Sandy. The house down on 1314 East 9th Street, the apartment building that burnt down, January 26, 2008. It's been six years and nothing has been done. Can the borough do anything about getting the owner to tear it down or rebuild or do something? It's an eyesore.
I'll look into what your options are, but there's, there's these type of issues all over the place right now, and it really depends who the owner is, what their intention is, and, and.
Oh, he hasn't done anything in six years now.
What's the address again, Mayor?
1314 East 9th.
It might be.
I don't know, I can look into that.
Another one is, they're doing a year tomorrow morning, Freak Bank Apartments. They have done nothing with that though.
That's actually what, that's what you were talking about, that you said six years ago, the first one. All right.
Freak Bank's been one year tomorrow.
Wow.
I guess I can address this to you, Mr. President. Issues with the firehouse. I believe you already seen some pictures.
Yes, sir.
The building is, well, the fire company plans on dedicating the building and housing the new ambulance and the QRC, our May, May 17th this year. There's a lot of issues with the fire, with the building. One of the lights out front of the building fell off the other day. They found it on the ground, exposed wires. Several other ones are leaning, come off the wall. There's cracks in the drywall throughout the building, cracks in the concrete, cracks in the drywall in the, the Joe Hughes Hall, ceiling leaks, very little of any hot water in the firehouse at all. Couple blowers on the heaters were bad, hadn't been replaced. It's really, it was the bay doors, the, the plastic that keeps the air out, they're all torn up too. It's really getting bad, and we've only been in that place since September, mid-September.
I'll defer to our engineering firm, Mr. Catania. You oversaw the construction management of the firehouse, and, you know, I guess maybe if we can get a recommendation of how we as a borough and the, the fire company can compile a list of all of the things that need to be done, and, you know, how to move forward with getting some things repaired.
Well, we as a borough, back in July of 2012, July of 2012, that's more than a year ago, a year and eight months ago, declared the contractor in default and went after his bond. To date, I don't think anything has happened with that. That is not a construction matter, that is a legal matter.
Right.
And that has to be addressed. The only way you're going to get these things repaired, fixed, is to get them done, pay the contractor to get them done, then turn the bills over to the solicitor to collect from the contractor who is in default.
And the only thing I would add to that is, with regard to the initial contractor, of course, you know we are in litigation.
Correct. Correct.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
With regard to the bond, right.
I'm talking about the.
I'll ask, I'll ask, I'll ask this question because I'm most familiar with the issue is, is that we're in the process of coming up with a rental agreement for Joe Hughes Memorial Hall. The heating system in the, in the hall is not functioning correctly. We have a contract with DWD. They do the service for all of the borough buildings. You know, are we in a situation now, or if I'm understanding your direction, we have the authority to call DWD, have DWD come in, give an assessment of what needs to be taken care of, if it's repairs that could be proven that were, for lack of a better term, faulty workmanship for the heating and ventilation guy. We can turn those bills over to the solicitor, and our solicitor through a third party would be going after whoever the heating contractor.
The important thing, Mr. Chairman, is to get the work corrected.
Okay.
That's the most important thing. You're not going to get it sitting there making up lists.
Right.
Like I understand there's several people making up punch lists. Well, that don't, that doesn't get a thing done.
Right.
What gets it done is to get a contract, find out what's wrong, get a contractor, get it done, pay them, turn the bill over to the solicitor who is engaged in recovering for the borough from the original contract.
Right.
Hold on, I have a question. Wasn't the original contractor dismissed from the project prior to the interior thing completed?
July of 2012, he was, went after his bond, July 2012.
Right, but I don't think.
And that's official.
I don't think Perezy was.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter who is. Perezy was the contractor, and he's the guy that's responsible.
Not if he didn't do the interior work.
What's that?
He didn't do the interior work, believing Mr. Ellis out of Chester did the work.
Had nothing to do with it. Nothing whatever to do with it.
The guy who didn't.
It has nothing at all to do with it. All right?
It doesn't make sense, sir.
Nothing makes sense with some of the guys over here.
So, so the direction forward is going to be, okay, you've, you've got an item that needs to be addressed. Follow the spend policy that we've got as a borough. If we've got to get it repaired, like the heating, the heating, we've got to get, we've got training scheduled 17th of February at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall.
Heating's already being.
Heating's being taken care of.
So we already have, DWD Mechanical's already in there. They're waiting for, two of the blowers were bad, and Joe from DWD Mechanical's been down there addressing that problem. He's got one blower fixed, he's waiting for a shaft to come in for the second blower.
Okay. Speaking of the firehouse rental agreement, are we allowing people to rent the firehouse without a rental agreement?
We're coming up with a rental agreement before, they'll be one signed before the first.
So no one's renting without a rental agreement?
Nope, they'll be one signed before this weekend.
Okay.
And just to go back to the repair work, so that I'm clear, do you want to be involved in us choosing a contractor to go do the repair work, or you're okay with, you know, we've got a contract with DWD.
No, you have a contractor. I would, I would see that, that the firemen get someone who they're, they're happy with, they're satisfied with as a valid contractor to do the work that's got to be done.
Okay.
Get it done, pay the guy, turn it over for collection, and I'm sure, we, we must be in a position now where we should be collecting something. You know, it's been 20 months.
We are, we are in litigation, and anything further with regard to litigation, I, I would prefer to defer to an E-session.
Okay.
As to the progress made on the lawsuit, but we're right in the middle of it.
Good. Mayor Reeves, I believe we have a court, we got our course forward, is to, you know, let's start getting some estimates, have the firehouse get some estimates and do the repair work, bring those estimates forward to Borough Council, we can do an approval, and we'll get.
I'll talk to you afterward.
Okay.
Do council have the opportunity to review the rental agreement before?
Yes.
If they don't do it.
Thank you, Chief Macheski.
I'm good. Just remind everyone with Harrowwood Awareness Class, it's the 27th of this month, starting at 6:15. I'd like to see everyone come out in attendance. It is a big issue coming out not only in Delaware County, about state offensive meaning across the country, education, the information that's put out there is really good, it's a good format, it's a good opportunity to learn about the drugs that are on the street to help protect their children. And we're also going to participate in the national takeback again this year in April. We're going to put some flyers up, and this year, hopefully, we can do as we had in the past, just increase getting the prescription drugs out of the houses that aren't being used, so there's no, no chance of a child or teenager or adult abusing those prescription drugs.
What time is the 27?
The 27th, the 6:15 PM at the Ridley Middle School. It'll be late refreshments also.
Ed, I have a question for you. At the, at the, at the heroin awareness forum up at the high school, Jack Wellin had made a statement that they're putting drop boxes in different locations?
Of permanent drop boxes. We are putting some in, in permanent locations, but where they put them, they're supposed to be observed by the police department, and at this time, we really don't have the room for drop boxes.
Okay.
In the future, yes, but right now, I don't think we have the room or capabilities in maintaining that properly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, sir? I'm good. Few things for me. First, I was invited to attend a informational meeting down at Tentacum Township on the 7th of February last Friday. Representatives from Norfolk Southern and from CSX Railroad were there to address the folks from Tentacum Township about the concerns that Tentacum has with the delivery of the crude oil trains. These are very long trains, 120 cars, and that make up well over a mile worth of trains, and the concern at Tentacum was is that, you know, as you come down the rail, they have three at-grade crossings, and their firehouse is on the riverside, and they just wanted some assurances from the rail companies that the impasse would not be impacted for a significant period of time if they needed to possibly move an ambulance or an apparatus on the other side of the tracks as these trains came through. That's Tentacum's issue, and not to belittle Tentacum's issue. The issue we have in Eddystone is about the safety. Where I got assurances personally was the safety record that CSX Railroad has, as well as Norfolk Southern, the protocol that they have in place, they both operate on the Conrail system, so Conrail is in charge of the dispatch of the train. However, if there is an incident, Conrail has that ability to immediately deploy forces from either CSX or Norfolk Southern, depending on who's pulling the train, and as we got into the discussions, it became evident to me that the folks over at Eddystone Rail Company, the folks at Embridge, the emergency management folks at Tentacum, the emergency management folks at Eddystone have all been talking, which is very comforting to know that those folks are developing a plan in the event that we've got some type of incident here in the borough. Embridge has a formal plan. I believe one of the goals that Beth Gross has with the fire and fire marshal was is to make sure that Embridge's plan is incorporated into an Eddystone plan, but, you know, safety is at the forefront of this operation, so, so that was comforting for me to know. Mr. Wilson forwarded an article about the car of the future, which is the double-walled car. That's actually every train or every car that is going to be in that unit is what was termed a car of the future, so, you know, it's brand-new rail cars is what's going to be coming down our system, which was comforting for me to learn about. But, you know, I also encourage everybody to do their own due diligence. Representative Joe Hackett has put forth legislation or wanted to have legislative hearings to make sure that the rail industry is being proactive in our safety measures. We as Eddystone Borough, we gave the permission to actually host his meeting here in the borough, so it's on the list of upcoming things. The 5th of March at 10:00 AM down at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall is going to be the legislative hearing on rail safety, and folks that are in the industry, Embridge will be there, Eddystone Rail Company will be there, Norfolk Southern will be there, CSX will be there, representatives from Conrail will be there, other state representatives, so the room will be full of the decision-makers, and I would encourage you, if your schedule is open, to put it on your calendar for the 5th of March. After the meeting in Tentacum, I did have the opportunity to meet and speak in length with Bob Lean, who is our emergency manager coordinator. Couple things that were on his list, and I don't want to point fingers at any individual agency, and I think we've got shared responsibility here, but some of the things that Bob brought to our attention was the fire siren in the village. Is that not working right now? And I'll look to members of the fire company.
There is an issue with the power video, and I know that myself and Bob have looked at it.
Okay.
It's an issue with the phone company itself. It's fed through a phone line. We think, we're thinking that's where the issue is. We reset it, rewired it. We'll reach out to Verizon so they can come down and take a look at it.
So it is something that you've got on the, on the horizon? The, the next issue is the evacuation horn. We used to test the horn at 7 o'clock every Wednesday. He has not heard it for a little while.
Has, has... No capability. That's because we don't have the capabilities, being a new facility.
Okay.
The way we would test is set off a tone through this building at 7 o'clock every Wednesday night.
Mm-hmm.
In order for us to tell, we have to send someone up here who knows how to do it and set it off that way.
Is there something we can look into possibly getting with?
We can, yeah, we'll look into a way to...
Okay.
Can it be moved?
I'm not sure. Bob would be the person.
I don't think it can be moved, but, you know, it's just the peace of mind to hear that horn at 7 o'clock on a Wednesday. And then the last was the repeater for Channel 4 up on the Exelon Tower?
That was something through Bob.
That'll be through Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
I know that wasn't one of the old, part of the plant that just shut down. We need to go down there and move it, but I don't know where to move it to.
Okay. I just want to try to make sure that we capture a seamless transition from old firehouse to new firehouse, and, you know, make sure that we've got the systems in place for both the evacuation horn as well as the fire siren in the village. That's all I have. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? May I adjourn?